That naturally has.
Yeah.
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 You question why did she say?
She's back there real quiet, she finds it open, here she comes now.
Yeah.
Zero. Cornhusk and all looks a little shaggy. Got bit by a snake. I did. Cornhusk and all. I didn't think the snake was much of a... It's just grass.
It's like coffee.
It's some grass. There is that. Yeah, some of them two-legged. You get the turkeys in there.
Two-legged, four-legged, those are crawling on their bellies.
Yeah. Those are crawling on their bellies. Oh.
That's the one where he does that.
That's it, lots of them. See if you can come out here or something. She been going for a while. Opened door.
Well, that's because you might be.
And they're open, my doors always open.
Yeah. That's because you might be.
I just see you through the camera, I said, okay.
Like, man.
You know, my hair is all the time. My hair. You got hair. All, all. Sure, too fat.
Fifteen pounds down, buddy.
Yeah. It's still fat, that's what's bad.
That's true.
No, I could tell.
Really? It's hard.
I know, I wish that could be.
I gained a pound this weekend, though, because I crawl a bit.
I did.
The crawl bit's not a lot of weight to take.
No, that's true. That's true.
It was fun.
Well, that's what I said.
Do you like those?
I like them.
I tell my wife when I crawl.
I walk.
Are they hurt? Tell my wife when you crawl, look at how they're just hurt. I thought you were talking about Marcus, I love my cousins.
I like the boys.
Imagine your eyes.
Even on the ground.
Imagine not got a landing on each side, too. That's good.
Yeah, over there.
This guy knows.
That's a current dance.
Chelsea's like that.
And Maggie. Sorry.
My computer's put that on.
No, it was. No. You're doing. Um, no. But it didn't work.
Would you stay?
Wrong way around, you're also. He likes it.
Go ahead.
Banana. Yeah, of course.
Rides a little bit different.
From back to yellow school.
In sports.
Uh, I, you sit down, won't they kill you three?
Good morning, still a call waiting to order. Young County Commissioners Court sitting in a regular meeting Monday, June the eighth, twenty twenty. It is nine thirty a.m. But note that this proceeding was posted in the manner for the time required. And that all members of the court are present, which is convenient to you to write the文书. Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this day, for all the many days we've had. We're grateful for our opportunity to live in the nation that we do, with all the freedoms, liberties that we know and have come to love and that people have died to preserve. Uh, we're, we ask your blessings upon this nation. Uh, today it struggles with the issues of racial divide, as it struggles with issues of protest. Uh, not that we don't enjoy that privilege, we uphold that privilege to peaceful protest, but the violence, uprising, pillage, the thieving, the destruction, those things that have nothing to do with, with circumstance and the issue at hand, uh, only a, only an excuse to being able to break the law. We ask that that cease, we ask you bring that to a cease immediately, but we uphold that right to publicly display our displeasure for the things that are going on with our governance, whether they be local, state, national, or whatever. We ask your blessings upon this, on this nation, we ask that you, uh, watch over all of those that protect those rights, all of the men and women that have served in our armed forces, that protect those worldwide and domestically also. We have your blessings upon the leaders of this county, that the decisions that they make be in order with your word and in service to the citizens that we serve, who put us in these places. We ask that you be with us for our guidance, direct us, forgive us for our shortcomings, as I know you will. Christ's name, pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, and one thing. I note that we are live on YouTube, I hope, I think, um, that if any member is, that is present, uh, in our celebration of our meeting on YouTube, we have a call-in number if you would like to make comments or you have some point to make about any items that might be on the agenda. That call-in number is nine four zero two two one two one zero seven. Out of number three, public comments, announcements, presentations, for these no active items, I have three listed here. I guess we'll just start the talk there. COVID in twenty nineteen, I'd say. As you know, most everybody is certainly aware of that, uh, we had a difficult week last week, as we went, uh, four or five weeks with, uh, no active case in county and I believe it was on the thirty-first day of May, there was one case that showed up. Since then, there's been eight new cases. The initial one in, in eight, and the initial one in seven were closely related cases that the tracing has led them back to a particular source. We believe that there's possibly could be more cases come out of that. Yesterday afternoon, we had one additional one that gives nine active cases within the county as of this morning. It is unrelated to the other eight. Now let me give you some district numbers. Let me go on and give you a few more county numbers here. To date, what I have recorded is eight hundred and eighty-five tests that have been sent to the official laboratory from doctors in Young County, Texas. Eight hundred and thirty-two of them have come back negative. Thirteen of them have come back positive, and that thirteen includes one fatality that was just a resident here not too long, for, for just a few days, and also includes three others that were residents of other counties that, uh, DSHS doesn't necessarily count them, uh, in Young County's numbers, although we do look at. Like I say, there have been one fatality in Young County, and there have been three totally recovered. There's thirty-eight cases that are pinky, as of, as of yesterday, like yesterday. Now, in our region, uh, that's, this is an eleven-county region, not our DSHS region, but an eleven-county, North Texas region, or, uh, I guess more accurately, our disaster district, these numbers come generally from, from our disaster district coordinator. Some of them are provided by DSHS, and some of them are provided by the individual counties. There's a few numbers that are unknown by particular counties, but altogether, out of the eleven counties, has been seven thousand one hundred and eighty-five tests submitted. Been six, six thousand one hundred and fourteen of them come back negative. A hundred and thirty-seven of them have come back positive, there's been five fatalities, and a hundred and one recoveries within those numbers. And that's like I say, that's the eleven-county area, and this actually history, which is reported, um, by our disaster district coordinator, and he gets those numbers various places. In Texas, as of my last, uh, knowledge, there's been one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine people tested. Seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight positive tests. One thousand eight hundred and thirty fatalities. Forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight recoveries. And at, at the current last number, there were twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety active cases in the state. That's, as of yesterday. In the nation, there are one million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and four cases. Been in excess of a hundred and ten thousand fatalities. In those fatalities, that is, combined, that's a combined number of confirmed cases that COVID in, uh, that were related to the fatalities, and then probable causes. A hundred, they've added those numbers together, so that seems like pretty good. In the last twenty-four hours up to four p.m. yesterday, probably four p.m. eastern time, there were twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fourteen confirmed new cases in the United States in that twenty-four hour period. There will be an update. Also in your package, you'll find, um, an update that we approved this or adopted for this, uh, court operating order that somewhat affects the courthouse also. Two weeks ago, we got our last meeting. Since we approved that, there, uh, just the Supreme Court issued a little modification to its, uh, emergency order number seventeen, which we, which we hit this on, and Jeff Presto added, he modified a few words in there and then added one statement. Here it says, there will be no jury trial prior to August the first, twenty twenty. When guidelines are approved on how jury trials are to be conducted, this order will be amended with those rules, so. That was the only major issue, I guess, that was added to that. They extended that from June the first, uh, to August the first. Or there is some special provisions that can be met to allow jury trials during that, this timeframe between now and August the first. But I don't expect there any to be here in our county. Okay, also in your packet, this might kind of go with our calendar, also in your packet, I think that I sent this to the commissioners early on, or preliminary values. They are preliminary and they will change to some degree. Then from like, no, got from our cat to this time. I guess I might all mention also that for the first weekend, the Junes, July, of course, it's gonna be real quick. And my knowledge, there is gonna be a red, white, new parade this schedule. So, I don't know how that's gonna play out, but that evidently is gonna happen, so we've got it marked on the calendar. Anybody else got any information, things they might want to bring up? If not, we'll move on to out of number four. That's considered, uh, county clerk minutes from the previous meeting, nine twenty fifth, twenty twenty. Are there any? May the twenty fifth. I don't know where that came from, twenty fifth. May the twenty sixth. Twenty fifth is a memorial. With that direction, on the day, are there any additions, additions, or corrections to the date today? Roger?
Yes.
All in favor of approve the minutes?
Uh, uh.
Any opposed?
I think that.
Uh, uh. Out of number five, it's considered, uh, pressure financial support, updates on securities players. Do you have anything to offer other than that?
Justice security.
Okay. What's the, uh?
Two thousand six, two thousand six hundred. Two hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-eight, thirty-six, some of it.
Okay. That motion. Jim Wally? Okay, we have a motion about that through. And I second by Jimmy Wally to approve, uh, credit for that presentation, on the updates on securities players on paper. Out of number six, consider all of the budget amendments about the paper.
I don't have any budget amendments today, we have vouchers. Uh, total is eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. And out of the general is sixty-nine thousand, five ninety-six, eighty-three. And there is.
Five fifteen.
Sixty-nine thousand, five ninety-six, eighty-three. And there is no doubt to be made.
Two more. Sorry. Mr. Wally? Mr. Rogers? Call and vote.
I have.
Is there anything else, Sheriff?
No, that's all today. You're surprised.
Okay. Out of number seven, discuss, consider Floyd Bonds, juvenile probation officer, five thousand dollars, three win acts. Juvenile probation officer, five thousand, and track you, dictating tax collection, possession of property. And will we approve the bonds as presented?
Thank you.
Do a second, and turn to the proof. All voters approve of those bonds. Out of number eight, consider extension agents request reimbursement, King Baron, two hundred and forty-six dollars, thirty-six cents, and Savannah Williams, thirty-one dollars and nickel, respectively. And will we approve those reimbursements as requested?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Sants, uh, to approve, uh, those requested reimbursements. Second by Commissioner Rogers, is that right? Call and vote.
I have.
Okay, Commissioner Sheriff, discuss my active report for jail and sheriff's office.
Good point. Jail, uh, population is one is forty-four. But with the, uh, recent activity of coronavirus, we've kind of changed the background again, so. Activities. Well, I do a lot of training, I mean, we do. Also in M H M R, we think what T D C's still shut down. Well, we're working on it, we're trying to figure out how to do it, so far they said we're not, if you don't meet the criteria, not filled out before. It's not what it says, so.
Sheriff, let me ask you a question, it's been asked me, is there anyone not in jail that should be, that is not because of the coronavirus?
No.
Our population is down, why doesn't it normally run this, if we got everybody in jail that needs to be in jail?
Well, if you, uh, the reason that it's like it is right now, is because of, we're not, before this happened, we were still hired gentlemen, sure, had been on top of banks and making sure that they don't stay here, the court systems have been, uh, faster, sort of getting people out, so they're not staying in jail. Now, also the ones that are coming to jail are finding out we're not staying in, so. Just our.
Arrest, arrest. Still processing and investing?
That's my, that's one thing I can, I know for a fact that we're giving up the T D C quicker than what we used to.
Is the arrest rate lower than what?
It is this month, on this page, but it hasn't, it's been up. I realize that fewer people probably are on the street milling around. I think less, our arrests are up, our staying is the same, but, you know, a lot of it is just that gentlemen, sure, it gets them moved out faster. But right now, we're still housing, a lot of blue warrants, and even if they're already, like, raising the T D C, you say.
Uh, I mean, we have, we're helping for the county.
Well, this is, you're saying, one, one.
Good for that. Ball County, Ball County.
I don't know.
Okay, is, is that, is that? One that's been convicted in that county?
I don't think he has, I'm not for sure a hundred percent on that, I don't know the two, but I don't think he has. But, uh, for the love of, they're not holding anybody, so whether they're being convicted or not, it's. I don't think he's been to trial yet. You could have mentioned in trying to get a lot of other things to do with this guy. Ted, what does that say?
Well, I'm trying to, and slow down if we have four or five months, that would affect the numbers that were coming into the jail by then, and trying to get everybody to the ballot. Didn't really, on, is, those that were sentenced or filed.
Once they've been sentenced, they've been moving pretty quick, one, if T D C was open, they'd already have one.
How, how many are COVID?
I've got a parent, maybe, but as long, as far as I remember, there was, uh,
COVID, been sentenced, being counted.
They've been since T D C, we're still hoping. See, this month either, our calls for services are still not the same, but, but rest now. See, this month either, our calls for services are still not the same, but the rest now. Yeah. Skate artists. Civil process served last month with forty, which I thought was pretty good considering... What's been going on? They haven't, uh, been in touch with it. City administrator.
Can we get an update on that, on this situation? Do you know anything?
Hard to know right now. Feel well to as the city administrator and as the, uh, N O chief. I don't think they're looking yet. I'm sure they will be soon.
Thank you.
Huh?
Sorry, we got...
Are the all the authors doing?
Nobody left for county, left?
Oh.
Is county already certified this last night?
He did.
We, uh, as far as controlling over what we're doing, we haven't, we're still doing, we didn't... As far as them asking us for help, not yet in the works. Oh, yeah. Are the, are the revives at their end up bullets? They, they asked me.
Did they?
They haven't had it yet.
Oh, they haven't, yeah.
I mean, why would they, for a second?
Yeah.
Time before, because they had no, they had nobody. I think right now they have, uh... Probably, which is a lot.
I believe it. Step up. There's, there's another job. So, what, what is saying that's certified? Chief, is he in place?
So anyway, we have some drug cases too that we picked up this last month. Seven arrests, that's a lot, isn't it? And probably the dog, one, two of them, eight huns.
Person that were pregnant from mental health reasons, two, had two victims.
Mm-hmm.
What was the purpose?
I have no idea, to be honest with you, on that. They don't... Person taken in custody for mental health reasons were two, and I don't know exactly what their issues were, but we transported apparently these two to which stop logs.
They'd be taken for...
Yeah, we are taking, we are, they are accepting, but things have kind of changed a little bit on how they process it. They won't come to see us, they won't come to interview, they'll leave me on the phone. Yes. Like one of them, that one did say, the other one didn't.
Did they, did, did they make the criteria be admitted?
They did.
Oh, it did.
See, that's what I, I'm having a hard time understanding is that they'll make the criteria here. When we get them aware, they'll reevaluate and then they don't. Which is a break in the process of...
Well...
Yeah.
Is that some sort of subjective thing that's going on? You see it one way, they see it another. Are you a measurement?
Well, they have, you know, they have their criteria and their, you know, how they have to do things and understand that. But if this is our criteria somehow, so. You have to make sure that if they, if they don't have a bed available, you might want to take them up. They're, they're going to turn their life back around and bring them back.
If somebody, somebody gets up there and like makes the criteria like that, huh?
Yes. But I've had them. Hard time getting those leave, found beds.
Is he working across the way?
It is, right. On your part, our part, and the cost of camping, the pick and the person won't, they need them. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Out of number ten, discuss consider road crossing permits, right, health problems. Sam Hawkins Road, Living Road, Boat Ranch Road, Hawkins Chapel Road, Harmon Road. Guess I think that looks like all of them, both.
Indeed. Everybody shows three board. Do you weigh the feet? Yeah. Feet weighing, it's a good set.
Is there a weight left?
Lot, lot, lot.
What they are. I'm looking at mine, I guess I'll be glad.
Really? I hope so.
You're in. Well, I have a motion, I'll say, yes, sir. Have a motion by Commissioner Roden to second by Commissioner Rogers to approve the, um, road crossings. Very road, that's health problems, that all are supposedly boards.
Yeah.
Call it over.
All right.
Out of number eleven, discuss consider twenty-twenty plus planning calendar. Close to reflection last year, a little bit shortened.
They changed the dates, more times since we stopped. And we don't have to have two hearings anymore, just have that one here. And, uh, now we can adopt that budget on the hearing date also, go have a way to meet. End of the budget, home that hearing, no one here. The difference is that the timeframe is more, she'll get notice of your hearing also. Time frame, they're coming out also.
So we can cut out one of those August dates and understand?
Yeah, well, like we said, we got to calculate the right by August. We have to calculate by August the seventh. And the reason being is, is if we happen to end up having any county ever, end up having that, or in an election, we understand all this stuff, that all before.
Second day, what it is before.
Yeah. I think it's sixty days prior to when we get our certified totals on that.
Debbie, I'm just saying, has, has anything changed with everything going on? I mean, I don't know.
I don't think it has, but I think everyone is still, I'll say this, I haven't seen anything that was certain.
I know, I haven't seen anything.
Well, it was the seventh of the Friday.
Just one thing, I'll...
Also too, when we took this course, as of that time, they have got the workshops and the longer to go out. They have got, they've moved yet, so they don't owe.
I, I don't think it's still...
They still have to get along, so they've done that too, once to figure out what they'll do.
Yeah. Debbie is speaking at the honorable training I'm having this week, and she's, this, she's got two hours to speak on this, and it'll do. And I had asked her about more, you know, and she said, we don't have, we don't have again.
The bad thing is, is we have changes for this year.
Okay, what changes down in twenty-two, Austin?
Obviously, we're there, obviously, there's been, uh... There are a few other things in there, a few, um, written, uh, that you can call, discuss the, 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 the fact, right, seals that they're working.
The only one that doesn't adhere to the deadline that's laid down by the state is the state.
Spring of twenty-twenty is when they're formed, you want to be. Here.
But everything kind of got pushed around.
Everybody up there.
The lights are big.
We should have one.
Not very, very much, there's a few things, notices, try to, all try to get out, law actually get out. Make a few requirements that are a little bit different, bicycle business. Put up sign process that would make you through. I wish, if you have anything you want to change on this calendar.
We're looking to change the dates that we have there.
Like August the tenth one?
August the seventh.
August the tenth should be August the seventh.
Yeah.
Like that August the seventh, that's always been there. Right, this five, I have, if you have the... Necessary, I'd potentially certify. By the twenty fifth, by the twenty fifth. Have our certified figures. That's always been there because the, before filing annual budget, county clerk give a written notice to each elected county pressing office officials. Officials will close out in expenses in the budget, that's in the code, that's the sign language, always in there. This, uh, copy of the code, the proposed budget by July thirtieth. Thirty first, three years. By the end of July. All these licenses where it says tax is such a quick, must be, must be, that. That is our chief procedure, must do that, although we have a contract with the, or the election also, our tax.
So you're saying the calendar you're presenting does comply with all these dates, how the legal rule is?
Yes. All I have tax on these obviously, I got a big exposure, work is in there. Have to be named different, there's, there's tax rates that are named differently than they were in the past fifty years.
So where they're not, there'll, there'll be changes to comply.
They for this dates that COVID's kind of put everything on hold, held us a little bit hostage. Come home, I'll wait for so time, get scouted out, probably, we only did that two weeks ago in our last week. The scout.
What exactly are limitations on tax rate going to be?
Uh, I think that we, we will fall under the, uh, two, I guess the category fall, say, where our tax levy is less than a big million dollars. Don't find our processes will change.
So three and a half percent, or three point five?
Minimum is amount?
Of a blood. Now, here's our preliminary values are seventy million, oh, excuse me. Our preliminary values, yes, for the increase of approximately seventy million.
Yeah, there was meant for expert, uh, and that's its logic, believe that. It won't be exactly that, it may sound different, but in ours, that January one, I'll be, I'll be so different, like that it was previous year. Depending on, on that next January, I, I see that. This slide for adoption hearing, September fourteenth. Is it, I said one day before.
Yeah, that's a little too late, too late.
Too late?
Be too late?
We have, uh, no later than seventy-one days before the electoral election.
He has the adoption, that's the latest date, twenty-fourth.
That's right, there's still one week to do about sixty days on certification, so we give you room if you got something you messed up on, we got some later.
September thirtieth, thirty-six days or so, for the election.
That means that be done back in October? March twenty-fourth, seventy-one days before the election.
One point, you give couple weeks, then you go ahead and redo that calendar?
So, yeah.
Put it in black, put it in black.
So y'all aren't going to be on Monday, because I'm not going to be here.
Oh, I was going to ask you. We're going to get off the course after that, ready to, presentation. Sure, Jake, everyone, Bill, professional, your presentation.
You ready?
Ready, bro.
Absolutely, absolutely, I mean.
Are you ready?
I'm human.
I'm gonna play you, yeah, I'm gonna play you.
Yeah.
Sound like you was making.
Is your visitor ready? I've got your smartphone on it.
We're fighting the white, on, uh, blue white one. Why don't we have that? Three five. I have number twelve, warrant restriction. Green, I'll see you. If you're in farmer, it's first of.
I've got it on speedy, dude. Set it up on the fifteenth of June?
Yeah. The only thing about temperature, like, the tribe's reporting four hours.
Be careful right now.
Be careful right now, but if I really take a red rain, it'll, it'll, uh.
I don't, I believe it, necessarily, you can actually be prepared.
The wind's gonna get us too, humidity's gonna drop.
First deal, first deal, rain, it's short.
Ken Johnson's.
I got cold, I'm gonna have that, we'll drop it all red side.
You will.
Go out to the warrant restriction.
Go ahead. So she makes.
So she.
So she.
It'll be ninety two by weeks.
Thirty two?
Over.
You'll be wearing sweaters.
Am I off this way, please?
Oh, you're Ken Johnson's. Twenty degrees, dude, or do something?
Thirty degrees, full of the Phoenix.
Right, right, you're.
It's dry.
He gets cold, man.
Ninety.
Compared with ninety. Well, I guess it's better than a hundred and sixteen.
I'm protesting my health, I'm sure. I will, well. Think that's a.
You've said for a while, your car is a thing with the other one.
I bet everybody up there.
Victor is a nice time to be.
Does anybody have any other matter of business that might need to be brought up this time? I had something on my brain a while ago, but lost it. I'm gonna mention, uh, everyone was now.
John, you know when we're able to start leaving the bottom doors unlocked? Do you have the timeframe of the mobile, leave the bottom doors unlocked?
Do the south least door? Um, don't foresee that probably before, um, probably not before, of course, July, depends on what, uh, taxes, providing it's time. I've, uh, gonna have an in person, and we will have part of an in person. Say, Wednesday, criminal court, the, the big names that we saw, gonna come here, sell it out there, here, this, this coming here. Already had that, already had this sale, basically, it was too late to change it, you just cancel it. Put somewhere else, we'll resolve it a little bit, where I think that we can provide, we still got these huge room jobs where we use our other one. Honor of social business, and, uh, cigarettes. Are biased.
I do have a question posed to court tonight, in the interest of public safety. If you don't want to recall, few years back, when in precinct one, we had a momentary rupture, a high pressure gas line out in Alfred Road.
Yeah.
That line has come to the surface one more time. He is holding them with the floor, it's repaired and just covered over with road material. Obviously, that line is not very, at the proper depth for lines such as that. Is there a way that the court can order that pipeline company, that line, to, to, did I make a request and then they come to court?
Uh, no, no, I, I.
Well, why, there is, responsible, responsible for order to do that.
Well, what I can do, I can call Nick Test and have them check, verify that line, the market for me, and they'll inform me as to who owns that line, and I can contact them, ask them to put that thing down, or is it?
What size?
Three inch line, I believe?
We had those out of Macatee, though, right? We had those out of Macatee.
Remember, it made a, it made a big fire before, and filled that whole lung valley full of gas. You don't wanna get back to, I don't, I don't.
Target line?
Sorry, target, target lines? It was targets at one time, I think, my crew mentioned it might be a company name, I forget. I don't know about, I don't know about my. I figured it targeted, I wonder if they would've got rid of it, being targeted too. That's where I check where it started. I'll just do a dig test on it, find out what happens later.
Tell them about the twenty four inch maintenance on the road.
It is crossing, it's.
Crossing the road.
Good long distance line, or?
I don't recall, it's that same line that hit before, so it's not long, I think together, but.
I'd say thirty six inches, forty eight inches, plus.
I'd say forty, forty two inches, something like that.
We have policy about road crossing, three and thirty six of the.
I think that was for utilities. I thought it was forever.
I don't think high pressure gas was more than that.
It worked, we're, we're good at, you know, the ranges.
About flow?
If you guys had those kind of problems in your precincts, we need to get a list of those and try to resolve, so that our road maintenance, folks are not in any kind of.
Twice a. What lines, Jimmy?
Road line.
I got one and all across them, you know that, on Macatee, they're doing, running their work across Macatee.
Yeah, those are all, probably all.
I'm trying to get that with something, or, yeah.
Because, like you say, it did.
Literally, if you can't help it.
I'll be there, tell them we're gonna.
Yeah, do. You know that. Before we hurt somebody. And just cover it up, it's not.
Well, we're just gonna keep working.
It's a temporary solution.
Keep working that out, huh?
Well, the road keeps.
I might hurt somebody with the rest of that.
Okay. Let me find out who owns it, I'll bring it up here.
I think, I think I probably. Exactly, there's a good, this place, which you would like, you could do this.
Yes, that would be the best way to approach the firm.
Yeah, I should, uh, uh, uh. Pretty big.
Please.
Those more, the party.
Always hitting it more flat. Thank you for the input, gentlemen. Thank you. All clear?
Aight.
Back, back some?
There it is.
Arizona's starting to, the whole city is just on fire.
Fire.
They're so, they have so many fires. They've one that was threatening on a major city.
Really?
And, uh, Queen Creek, it's just east of Phoenix.
How do they put those out, marshes?
Uh, they have, yeah, they have wild.
Wild.
No, they have, um, they do a lot for like, the one in Queen Creek, they do a lot of, uh, uh, like repellent, like by plane. But they have wild fire hot shots.
Yeah, it's landed. You have to top the mountain, the trees on them?
Black, yeah, I can see, all that areas.
Yeah.
Will that, will that fire actually come out of the mountains into the city if they don't put it down?
Yeah. There was, there was, still eleven, still eleven, when the, the hot shot, nineteen, they were by their fire, uh, like north of Phoenix. And were overcome, and all nineteen of them died.
Yeah, that, that show about that.
Yeah, there's a movie about it.
That's a good movie, though.
It's, uh, I, I follow it.
Coming up that valley.
On Rory, dude.
But they had, their, uh, APS, uh, power, the power company there, had a massive fire last night.